Karen Dewey, did you hear me?
I did, we're all set.
Are we on Facebook?
It's getting ready to stream, yes.
Okay. All right, we will go ahead with our regular town council meeting Monday, December 14th, 2020. I will open our meeting at 7:01 PM. And if we could have the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I will do a roll call to determine a quorum. Councilwoman Probst.
Here.
Pruitt.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum with Jeff Pearman is not in attendance tonight. I will go ahead and look for the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I will look for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
All in favor, and I'll have to do a roll call. Probst?
Yes.
Pruitt?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, our agenda has been adopted. Council reports. Who has any council reports? Does anybody approach?
I do not.
Pruitt, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, Councilman Smith?
I do not.
Okay. I don't really have a report. I just, I would kind of like to make just a quick comment. And that is to, this is to our residents and just encouraging our residents. If there are ever any questions or concerns about rezonings, developments, transportation projects, anything of the sort, to please reach out to Lisa or to myself or to any of the council members. I just think it's real important that everyone have accurate information. And I know sometimes things aren't, particularly with social media outlets, you know, things just aren't always accurate and reliable. So I just would really encourage our residents, this is what we're here for and we're happy to, to help you and to try to answer your questions. So I would just encourage anyone that has any questions to please reach out to any of the staff or our elected officials. So that's all. Public comments. Karen, do we have any public comments that have been submitted?
I have received no public comments.
Very good. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a couple of presentations tonight. And the first one is Van Harrell, and he is our Union County Tax Administrator. And we would welcome you here. And I believe you're going to be presenting us with just some information on the upcoming countywide reappraisal. So welcome, Mr. Harrell.
Thank you for having us. I'm going to start this off by showing a short video that actually just came off the production line today that our county communications team put together. This is going to be launched on our YouTube channel as well as county social media. Let me know if you can't hear the volume.
Okay.
The audio from the, from the video. Let me share my screen here. Can you hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
A revaluation is simply a reappraisal of all property located in the county. It is the process of us reviewing sales data since the previous reappraisal cycle, which was 2015, and establishing a new schedule of values by which all properties in the county will be valued.
The state of North Carolina requires that all 100 counties in North Carolina reevaluate property on an eight-year cycle out of minimum. The boards of county commissioners can elect to do a more frequent revaluation on a two, four, or six-year basis. Union County has elected an eight-year cycle. The Department of Revenue actually samples all real estate sales in the county and then compares that to the tax value that's actually on the county tax register. When there is a differential of greater than 15% between the actual average sale price and the tax value, the Department of Revenue automatically triggers a revaluation process. And we are in that revaluation process.
Our staff, our appraisal staff and customer service staff are very friendly, very knowledgeable, and are willing to walk people through the entire process related to appeals and answering questions about the value of their property. First and foremost, most properties will increase in value. There will be some that stay the same, some that go up more than others. The key message for taxpayers and property owners to understand is that a revaluation does not necessarily mean a tax increase. The value of your property is only one component of the process. The final taxes that you pay will be determined based on the budget and the adopted tax rate.
So we're looking at the sales that have happened over the last couple of years and we build a process to basically build up to that price based on the price of the land, the cost of building the homes, different quality of homes, that sort of thing, or pools or barns.
So some property owners are eligible for tax relief. The primary programs are the elderly exclusion program, the disabled vet program, and the permanently disabled program. We also have a program that's based on land use, which is our farm program. And that is differentiated by forestry, cropland, and horticulture. I know our revaluation process has a lot of information. We're here to help the property owners of Union County. You can access our webpage at unioncountync.gov or you can call the office at 704-283-3746. And we'll be more than happy to answer your questions and help you through the process.
Okay, so they, they did a good job of taking my 25-minute presentation and putting it in three minutes. So we can be done. I mean, it's, we've got some other information for you tonight. But they did do a good job with that. And we just received that video today, I think, right at 5 o'clock, actually.
Oh, okay. Well, that was a nice video. It did condense this. You know what? Hang on, I gotta, sorry, I've gotten feedback in my ear and it's, that was a great video. It was very helpful and it did condense it quite nicely.
We tried to go through the rest of this as quickly as possible. This, I've shortened this presentation a little bit. It has been taking roughly 30 minutes, but I'll try to make this as quick and painless as possible for the board. Just a brief moment of introduction again. My name is Van Harrell. I'm the Tax Administrator. I've got two of my directors on the call with us tonight. Phil Avery, as you saw in the video, he's the appraisal director. And Robin Mary is the assessment director. She takes, her division is responsible for taking the work that Phil does to bring properties up to market value and applying any tax relief qualification, qualifying programs to those properties, handling GIS as well as personal property assessment for individuals and businesses in the county. Mitzi Balcom is our Revenue Division Director. She's not with us tonight. She's essentially over the collection side of the office for water and utility and tax bills as well. So just briefly, what is reappraisal? What is it and why are we doing it? Like I said in the video, this is a systematic review and appraisal of all real property in the county. We have to be in compliance with state statutes and existing case law. And the key purpose of it is to reestablish equity and fairness in the property tax base. When you get into a situation like we're in now, our last reappraisal was 2015, you'll have some properties that are further under assessed than others, some that could be over assessed as we had in 2012. It's leading up to the 2015 reappraisal. So it's one of those things that kind of ebbs and flows with the market. But as the county manager said in that video, and you'll see here in another slide, when we get outside of certain bounds under statute, we automatically trigger a reappraisal. Another purpose is to ensure that current assessed values are reflective of the current real estate market. Right now, we're working in the county as well as the town of Weddington and working on 2015 property values. So that, again, we know what kind of market we've had since that time. It's been very active, very healthy. And those values are far behind where we are currently. And there's a small piece of restoring tax base loss to equalization, and we'll explain that further in the presentation. As to the timing of a reappraisal, we got a question today is, why are you doing this now? And so many people are suffering from the pandemic. And bottom line is, right now, we don't have a choice. So there are three, three timeframes for doing a reappraisal. One is the mandatory eight-year maximum. The board does not take action to advance the reappraisal cycle on its own, such as we did in 2000, 2004, and 2008. The statutes didn't take effect. But, and the board opted not to do that in 2019. So we had to wait and see what the market did and see if we were dictated by the state to do this reappraisal. The second option is actually the third bullet point here is where the board can advance that cycle. Where we are qualifying to do this process now, and I use that term qualifying loosely, is a mandatory advancement of the reappraisal based on population size and the county sales assessment ratio. And that ratio is simply a comparison of current assessed values to what the market is saying properties are selling for based on a sample performed by the Department of Revenue. In that piece of the qualification, if you're plus or minus 15% of market, which means you're either at 85% or 115%, we're going to get a notice from the Department of Revenue. You've got three years to perform a reappraisal. We received that notice in March of 2018. So 2021 is our deadline to meet that mandate. That only applies to counties greater than 75,000 population. Obviously, we're in excess of that. Our reappraisal timeline, this is not something that we can just flip a switch and do overnight. This has been a two, two and a half year process. We started developing our reappraisal plan back in 2018 along with a full software implementation in our office in all three areas, collections, assessment, and in our appraisal area. That plan had to be submitted to DOR by December 31st, 2018. In the time since then, we've been analyzing the market, doing our studies and stuff that we need to set and determine our schedule values, which are the rules and guidelines that we use to appraise property for the next X number of years starting January 1st. And it depends on when the next reappraisal goes into effect is when that schedule of values will change. So on October 19th of this year, we presented the schedule of values to the board, county commissioners. On November 2nd, they had a public hearing. November 16th, the board adopted the schedule with no comments from the public. We're currently in the process of finishing up a 30-day window. Once the board adopts that schedule, that anyone can appeal the schedule to the Property Tax Commissioner in Raleigh. We're at the point now where that's starting to finalize. This weekend will be the deadline for that. And then the effective date of the reappraisal is January 1st, 2021. Shortly after that, we will provide, we're looking at mid-Febuary to provide an update to the Board of County Commissioners as to new median home values in the county and other statistical data related to the process. We anticipate currently mailing the reassessment notices to every property owner around the end of February. That then starts our informal appeal period, if you will. And we use the word informal because up until the first Monday in April, we have the, we have the ability in the tax office to work with property owners to come to an agreed upon value of their property if they disagree with our assessment. And, and we look at their data, they look at our data, and we work back and forth with them on that process. Once the Board of Equalization and Review convenes in April, we no longer, from a tax office perspective, have the authority to change that value without the board's approval. So that, that session, it's not one meeting. It's just they convene in the beginning of April. They'll adjourn officially around the end of May. That gives us two months where formally someone can appeal to the Board of Equalization and Review, but that first step in the process always goes to the tax office. Even there, even after the board convenes, we will work with taxpayers to find a value. If we agree upon it, they agree upon it. We'll present that to the board as a staff recommendation. And then at that point, the board will approve it and the value is finalized for 2021. And I kind of got ahead of myself talking about that, so we'll skip over some slides here in a moment. We develop our reappraisal plan considering several items, the budget needed to do, to do the project. It's not a cheap project and we do it all in-house. We do not contract with outside vendors to do this process. Some counties do, and they spend upwards of $2 to $5 million, depending. Some counties, larger counties, spend more, but counties our size can spend upwards of $5 million going through a reappraisal process with a vendor that does your appraisals. So we like to keep that in-house. Our folks know the county, they know the market, they know the environment, they know our taxpayers. And that works to both our advantage and the taxpayers' advantage in the reappraisal process. Of course, staffing needs, any outsourcing, there's a few things we outsource, but nothing related to the appraisal itself. And then hardware and software compliance. We're in compliance with all these areas based on industry standards and DOR recommendations. And so we feel pretty good about the plan and DOR approved it at the time we submitted. So you've heard me talk about the schedule of values and a lot of people don't understand what that is. The schedule of values is required to be adopted for every reappraisal cycle. This schedule establishes all the rates and procedures in effect for the next reappraisal cycle starting in 2021 and lasting until either 2025 or 2028, depending on when the next reappraisal cycle would hit. The data we use for this is, we look back at the real estate transactions that have occurred since 2015. At the time this presentation was put together, which is at the end of September, we had 33,000 qualified sales over the past five years in all around Union County that we used to build the schedule of values. Now primarily, we will look at the last two years because the market is so active. We do not need to go beyond that point. Since we put this together, that use, that number of qualified sales has gone up by about 2,500. So we're well over 35,000 sales now that we're, that we're looking at in totality. The point of the reappraisal was to capture the current real estate market. This is retro, this process is retrospective in nature. We are not analyzing the market to predict where we think the market's going. We are simply bringing tax values up to what the market says they are current, what real estate market says values are currently. We have three core guiding rules, principles, and philosophies to guide us in this process. Number one is to be fair and equitable to taxpayers. We, we all live in the county, I think roughly 95% of my staff are residents of Union County. So the work that we do affects our own wallet as well as those that live around the county. We want people to understand that we, a lot of you are our neighbors and we want to do a good job. And then we believe in our processes, we believe in the work that's done, the staff is highly qualified, and we want to treat everybody the same. Obviously, you, you can't make everyone happy. Our job is to work and get to that, that medium where they understand. I mean, I like the decision that was made, but they understand why we did what we do. Secondly, everything we do is governed by North Carolina general statutes. We do not operate outside of those statutes in any form or fashion. It's, it's, that, that really is the lifeblood of our office as far as guiding our day-to-day processes. And then we try to be in line with, in all of our aspects of the office, with industry best practices, with the International Association of Assessing Officers and the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Just to touch briefly on our methodology, this is a mass appraisal process. It's not, it's not that different than fee appraisal, but in some respects, but in many respects it is. So we're not going out and looking at a house and then looking at two other houses to determine a value because we don't have the manpower or the, or the staffing levels to do that or the time commitment. It would take years to, to be able to do that. So we look at neighborhoods, we have appraisal neighborhoods. We use all three approaches to value, sales cost and income. If there's areas where there's no sales for land valuation, we use the processes of allocation abstraction. And that's typically where you allocate, if a property sells for $100,000, you allocate 20% of that roughly to land value and then your improvement cost will be $80,000. Just, just kind of a rule of thumb for the industry is about 20% in the, in that process. From a land valuation perspective, we segregate the county into appraisal neighborhoods, which, which allows the appraisal staff to more easily look at like properties and like areas to appraise the same type of house. So we're not appraising a, a 2,500 square foot brick home in the northeast part of the county in rural Union County the same as we would appraise a similar home, similar quality in Weddington or Wagsaw. Because there's two different geographical regions, it's going to have different demands on the properties. So they're going to be worth different amounts. Location is everything in real estate and anybody that's involved in that industry is very familiar with that saying. From an improvement valuation standpoint, we use replacement costs new and adjust that for depreciation and also the location of the property. We have an ongoing quality assurance review program. A lot of people think when you do a reappraisal, well, the tax office doesn't have anything to do until the next reappraisal comes along. That's not true. We have to, we're required to review properties every year. And our goal is to put eyes on every piece of property in the county. We currently have onsite review processes as well as desktop reviews for vacant properties and for properties that we can't get access to. We do not have a legal right necessarily to just step on somebody's property and review it. If there's a no trespassing sign, we have to abide by that. And then we work with that taxpayer to set up a time where we can try to review their property with them. If that's not possible, we, we do use desktop, desktop reviews with aerial imagery. To date, roughly 64,000 parcels, give or take, have been physically reviewed by, by staff. To put that in perspective, we currently have 103,000 parcels in the county. So we still have ways to go to touch every property, but we reviewed every neighborhood that we have as an appraisal. And I'll touch on the appraisal neighborhoods here in just a moment. We use a process called neighborhood delineation. It was first used in Union County in the 1980s. It is a critical component to the reappraisal process from a tax perspective and mass appraisal. Like I said earlier, it divides the county into smaller geographical units. We currently have right around 900 appraisal neighborhoods in the county. The average parcel account, parcel count per neighborhood is 115 parcels. So you can see where that would add up quickly and you would have to draw lines for more neighborhoods depending on the type of property and that type of information. It allows us to analyze smaller sets of market data to ensure equitable valuation within neighborhoods with comparable properties. It also allows us to maintain consistent values in a manageable market area. And finally, the, the big advantage is for taxpayers. It allows them to compare their property to like properties in their neighborhood. And just to kind of use an example, we've got a map here. They kind of, all of our neighborhoods are color-coded. If you look in the bottom right, the southeast corner of the county, you'll see everything is this one kind of pinkish color. That would indicate that area is a single neighborhood or at least a large neighborhood. There could be some smaller ones there. From an appraisal standpoint, a lot of that is rural vacant land. And so you have some homes, you'll have a number of homes there that are considered like quality and such. But for the most part, that is considered a neighborhood. If you come over toward Weddington, Marvin, Wagsaw, you see a lot of gray in here. If we could zoom in on this map, you'll see a lot of neighborhoods starting to populate within that area. So comparatively speaking, you may have one large geographical area that is a neighborhood. And you may have a single subdivision in the western part of the county that may have seven or eight neighborhoods within one subdivision based on the quality of homes in the neighborhood and different builders, different construction types and styles, those type of things. We spoke about equity in the tax base at the beginning of the presentation. This kind of shows you something, shows you some of the raw data that we look at from an equity standpoint and that the Department of Revenue looks at. So there are three types of, four classes of property that we tax in Union County and statewide. Registered motor vehicles, public service companies, which are those companies like Duke Energy, Union Power, Piedmont Natural Gas, and the railroads. Those companies, those companies are assessed by the Department of Revenue. And they have some special legislation regarding the sales ratio that I mentioned earlier that I'll explain in more detail in a moment. Then you have personal property, which is taxed at 100%. It's reassessed annually. And that's your boats and motors for individuals. And then for companies, it's all their assets and such that they operate their business with. And then the main thing, the main driving class is real estate. You go back to 2015 and, and this chart, after the last reappraisal, which we lost 10% of our tax base in countywide in that reappraisal cycle because we were coming off the recession and the market hadn't fully recovered at that point. So our sales ratio in 2015 was 99.71%, which is just a tad below market, we could say. And it's right on market from our perspective. As you progress toward 2020, you can see with the activity in the real estate market, the sales ratio starts to decline rapidly. When we put this presentation together again a couple of months ago for 2020, we were at 73%. That number has now dropped to 70% in the last two months because the market continues to accelerate from a price perspective. This public service company line here, you heard me reference restoring tax base loss to equalization. This is a special class of property and they have special legislation that allow them by law, when a sales ratio for a county drops below 90%, they're allowed to have their valuation reduced. And that's what happened in 2019 and 2020. I'm not sure how, how much public service property you have in Weddington, but under Kim could speak to the, to the fact that your valuation was lower compared to what the assessed value was as to what you could actually build them on. From a county perspective, just to show you how that impacted us. And it's not a large, we've got a tax base of, a total tax base of $30 billion in Union County. Public service companies are just under a half billion. So it's not a large piece of the pie, but it's about 1%. 2017 to 2018, we were able to appraise them at 100% of market. So there's no equalization, there's no loss in revenue. 2019 to 2020, here's their market value for, for 2020. For example, it's 479 million. Department of Revenue told us you can, because of your sales ratio, you can only assess them at 83% of the market. So we could only bill them based on $397 million, which was a revenue loss of just under $600,000. So it does have an impact, but it's not tremendous, as tremendous for our county as it is other counties. So the question everybody has is, how does this impact me? The, and our answer to that is, it depends on your, your current assessed value, where you're located, and how the value, values play out in the reassessment process. But from our standpoint, virtually every property in the county is going to see an increase in property value. And I emphasize value because this has, this is only one component of the property taxes that you pay. Our current valuation year is 2015. Again, that was a contraction to the tax base. We're looking at a residential and commercial average increase of, this number's changed a little. Right now, we're probably looking at 25 to 30% across the board in the county. Now, having said that, there are some areas, some areas that may be more, some maybe less. I know I was speaking with Phil earlier today and it looks like mine, for example, is going to go up for about 49% just based on, based on the neighborhoods and those type of things where I'm at. So it's going to vary for person to person depending on the neighborhood they're in, location. But as a whole, the county can expect a 25 to 30% increase. For rural land, that's trending the same way. There's been a lot of, a lot of large tracts that have been purchased this year over the last couple of years for development. And so those, those prices are indicating the same type of increase on, on just average, on average land increases. You heard Robin in the video speak about some of our tax relief programs and we'll highlight some of those here very quickly. Our biggest one is the present use value and that, that is a major impact for farmers. It is a significant tax relief for them and is well deserved because they are the lifeblood of Union County. Many of you may not know, but Union County ranks number three, I think, in agriculture in North Carolina. Now, 46% of our total acreage in Union County qualifies for the PEB program. That, that's a significant impact. impact to the to the overall tax base and is a significant benefit to the farm community. There are three programs involved in that. It's agriculture, horticulture, and forestry. There are ownership, income, and a minimum acreage requirements to qualify for that program. It's and it is a big part. We have a, we have a group of our staff that is dedicated solely to managing this this part of our office and it's had because it is extremely busy process. Those rates are also increasing, just to kind of give you an idea of the 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 difference in market value assessments and present use value assessments. Our twenty-twenty-one rate per acre for a piece of property in the ag program is four hundred and twenty dollars in value. So our our hypothetical scenario here, if a property owner has fifty acres in the use value program and it's located in that southeast corner of the county, their current value based on the twenty-fifteen rate would be nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. That's what they would pay taxes on, not the estimated four or five thousand dollars per acre that the land is actually worth on the market. So with these new rates, that changes to twenty-one thousand dollars of taxable value for twenty-twenty-one and increases at the tag current tax rate, their increase in taxes will be twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents. So even though these rates are increasing, it's not significant. But the total deferment, and this is a deferred tax program. So if you have a large tract of land in the farm program and you sell it for development or any other purpose that doesn't continue the use of that program that the that the farm is involved in, they actually get billed for the last three years of taxes on their property, and then it's up to the buyer and seller who pays those taxes. But as a as an annual on an annual basis, roughly a ninety percent deferment in taxes for that for that property owner. So we touched on the appeals process earlier. I'll I'll highlight a couple of things here. We spoke about the informal review. The second step is the Board of Equalization and Review. If you don't agree with your property value and we can't come to an agreement from an office perspective with you, you have the right to appeal to that board. If you can't, if if the board makes a decision and you don't agree with that decision, your next step will be the Property Tax Commission in Raleigh. And from that point, that is the final arbiter of a value value appeal. If there's a matter of of law as far as legal procedure, if 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 a taxpayer thinks that we aired outside of general statutes and value in their property, they can appeal to the Court of Appeals and then on to the Supreme Court if necessary. Again, at those levels, you have to have an attorney. Levels one, two, and three, you do not. Taxpayers can represent themselves at the local board and at the at the Property Tax Commission. Our other tax relief programs are the elderly disabled. Those are income-based and age restricted. So the we we have, again, that same staff works with the with all our tax relief programs. And so they're very knowledgeable and and willing to to help walk people through that process. And we have our disabled veterans for qualified owners. They get an exclusion of forty-five thousand dollars. Neither of these, unlike the P U V program, neither of these are deferments. These are straight tax relief programs where the value is excluded from taxation. Then the circuit breaker program, I'll just briefly highlight that. It's similar to the elderly program. It is sort of another level beyond the initial requirement. So if you don't qualify at the first level, you can do this, but this is actually a tax deferment. We only have two or three properties in the county that are in this program because it creates a deferred tax liability either for the owner or for their heirs if they were to pass away. And and a lot of people don't want to leave their family in that situation. And of course, we have a P U V program, then certain classes of property are exempt from taxation if they qualify charitable, religious, educational, governmental. But again, for all of these, ownership and use requirements have to be met for these programs. So how are we getting the message out? A lot of it is doing things like we're doing tonight. This is our third meeting, actually our fourth meeting in the past two weeks. Speaking, all have been virtually at this point. The the so currently, we have seventeen meetings scheduled around the county. We will meet with every jurisdiction at least once and we'll come back and do a follow-up and provide you with some at some point and provide you with some more specific information. Statistically speaking, as to the impact for your jurisdiction with the new property values. We're reaching out to local media outlets. We've done some radio interviews as well as newspaper interviews here locally. The county is heavily utilizing social media. And then we'll be reaching out to community and civic groups as well to speak to anyone who wants to have us bring this information to them. There is a, we have a dedicated webpage for the twenty-twenty-one reappraisal. If you go to the county's website, you can find that under taxes and property. And like I told, I think it was Town of Middle Springs last week, you're more than welcome to take that hyperlink and link that to your town webpage, so people have a direct access to that. There's a lot of information there. There's also a speaker request form. So if anybody wants to have us come speak to their organization, they can submit that. It comes directly to me and we'll work with our team to schedule that that appearance. Just a snapshot of the county tax base. We have roughly a thirty billion dollar tax base in the county. We lose ten percent of that to tax relief programs every year. So our total taxable value in the county is twenty-seven point eight billion for twenty twenty. That's in line with our our growth rate annually is roughly three percent, slightly above three percent for twenty twenty. Last year was slightly below. So we anticipate that trend to continue. We're missing some slides here or some pictures here. Let me get back. This is just a, I'm just going to skip this, but it gives you the breakdown of of the tax base. So seventy-three percent of the countywide tax base is residential. I don't think that comes as a surprise to anyone. And that's in that's including personal property. If you carve out just real estate, that percentage goes to eighty-eight percent. So we are still a heavily residential county with only about ten percent in the commercial industrial classification. Just some nutshell statistics for the county. Our average since twenty thirteen, our average parcel growth, we're adding about seventeen hundred new parcels per year. Kind of mirroring that trend is the the number of new resident residential units coming online each year is about seventeen sixty-one on average. Sales were averaging sixty-three hundred per year over that same timeframe. And we're only comparatively speaking to the commercial industrial growth, we're only averaging about sixty new starts per year and new construction for commercial industrial. It would show you just a brief look at our sales ratio history, show you from a revout perspective how this trend goes. And this goes back to nineteen eighty-six. So we talked about a twenty-five to thirty percent increase countywide on this. That's not unheard of for Union County. If you go back to the nineteen ninety-two reappraisal, there was a forty percent increase in the county. Again, in the year two thousand, there was a thirty percent increase. In two thousand four and two thousand eight, we did more frequent reappraisals. So the the impact was not as significant on a year-to-year basis. In two thousand four, the increase was only twelve percent. Again, in two thousand eight, you're looking at sixteen percent. Then, of course, we know what happened in two thousand nine when the economy went south and the real estate market followed it very rapidly. We actually inverted the the sales ratio line and ended up at almost a hundred and twenty percent of the market. And that's when we triggered the twenty fifteen reappraisal, which was which we were notified in two thousand twelve. And coming forward to two thousand fifteen at this point here, and you've seen the trend as as we move into twenty twenty. That says seventy-five percent, but I've got to, again, I've got to update that slide. We're hovering around seventy percent right now as a county. Now comparatively speaking, I looked at the town of Weddington today. And Weddington is proper is sitting around seventy percent as well. So you you're very much mirroring what the county is seeing. So in conclusion, we have four primary messages for people. Number one, we're transparent. Everything we do is open to the public. We share everything with the public and and we make ourselves available to the public in every way. And we we really focus on equity and fairness. That is a core principle in our in in this business. We have to treat everybody the same, and that is our goal. We have a customer-focused process. And this informal appeals process that people will utilize moving forward, once they get their notice, we work very closely with the taxpayer. All of our data will be online. So you can actually go in, we'll have a program that we're going to be launching after the first first of the year. It is a comparable sales program where you can go in and put your property in and within the specified radius around your property, see all the comparable sales that were used to value that property. So you're going to see the same data that we have access to. And if you see something that doesn't fall in line with with what we're saying, your properties, bring that to our attention. Also, there may be factors on your property that we're not aware of. We ask people, let us know because we want to get it right. We're not trying to to get anybody. We're trying to be fair and we want to make sure everybody's property is assessed fairly. Our public information campaign, again, this is part of the process and we we want to be in the community. It's hard right now with with all the COVID restrictions and and limited meetings. But we are doing everything we can do to get the information out. And then finally, utilizing technology such as aerial imagery, the comparable sales portal that will have our appeals module will be online. People will be able to submit appeals electronically and and all that information will be available on our website. And with that, that's all I've got. If you have any questions, I'm glad to fill them and and Robin and Phil and I are available to 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 help you further.
Very good. Thank you. That's a lot of information. It was it was helpful, though. There were a lot of questions I had with regarding to timing and and you know, what Spark said. And and so that that was very interesting. I will open the floor and give Council an opportunity if anybody has any questions.
I have one question real quick. Sorry. This is Ann. Public service companies. Can you do you have an example of what one of those companies would be?
Yes, that's going to be companies such as Duke Energy, Piedmont Natural Gas, CSX Railroad. Those that deal heavily with infrastructure that cross jurisdictional lines and maybe statewide in some cases.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, did I hear Councilman Smith? Did I hear you start to have a question?
No, I was just saying I did not have a question, but thank you.
Okay, Janice. Any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you for the presentation.
Very good. Thank you very much. And we will see if we can't get a link to that video that you posted up on our website and and that was great. Thank you very much.
Again, feel free to feel free to link to our reappraisal webpage if if you want to. There's a lot of Q and A's up there, frequently asked questions.
Right.
There's going to be a lot of a lot of assets there for for people to utilize.
Okay, fantastic. We'll make sure that that the staff gets that and gets that linked up and you know, and we may see about even just sending the information out on on just the whole link out on it as a Facebook post. Just so people I, you know, I don't know that a lot of people know that this reevaluation is coming. So maybe we'll go ahead and see about getting that posted on Facebook and letting folks know. So thank you very much for that.
All right, thank you. Thanks for having us.
All righty, you're welcome. Okay, next we have our Bjorn Hansen, who is the Union County Senior Planner, and he is here this evening to give us an update on the Union County twenty fifty comprehensive plan. So Bjorn, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I am not sharing my video because if you ever get asked by your PC to restart, give yourself about two hours because I hit restart on my laptop that has my video camera.
Oh, no.
That thing's still chugging, so I'm on my backup machine. So what I'm
That's okay. Thanks.
Yeah. So what I'm I'm presenting on your screen, are you seeing a webpage for Union County twenty fifty?
Yes.
Okay, so this is our, this is our main portal for the public to be able to engage in our comprehensive plan process, which is over ninety percent done at this point. Union County is updating its comprehensive plan. This is something that is more than just land use planning. It's made recommendations on environmental, economic development, transportation, education, other kinds of infrastructure issues. And we are in the draft plan review phase. So this was released to the public about three weeks ago. It is a citizen-led effort. We're staffing it and we're developing it internally without the assistance of consultants. And this is available through Friday for comments. You can see here on the screen all the opportunities that the public has had to participate. We had a virtual one, the first time we've ever done that where anyone can join in. We had about nine or ten members of the public join in on December second. Had one last week at the Ag Center, had one actually today at Indian Trail Town Hall, and then we'll have our last one tomorrow at the Waxall Police Department Community Room. That one will be from five to seven PM. And this is the citizens' recommendations to the county commissioners. They were appointed by the county commissioners, but the county commissioners can ultimately approve whatever plan they want. So this will be, if everything goes well, at the end of January, this will be recommended to them. It will then go to our planning board, probably in March. And if they like what they're hearing, they'll make a recommendation to the county commissioners. County commissioners can consider it. The earliest would be April. And at that point, they could say, we like it, we approve it completely as presented. They could say, we hate it and go away and never show this to us again. Or they could say, we like a lot of it. We accept the recommendations. We're going to make some tweaks. And then we're going to adopt the plan. So thank you for your work. We accept your recommendations. I don't know what they're going to do, but they are fully informed on this process and and they've been pretty complimentary of the process. And so none of these recommendations are going to be a surprise. What I'm going to show to you, some of you have seen this before, but probably not everyone. I'm going to hit play on this video and I'm actually going to put my microphone next to the speaker to play the audio. This is a two and a half minute video that explains the entire process and the recommendations that are in the comprehensive plan. So stand fast for a moment.
Union County is updating its comprehensive plan, which essentially serves as the roadmap for our future to guide growth and services and quality of life in the county. The project is called Union County twenty fifty, and it's led by your voices. My name is Archie Morgan. I own W I X C Radio here in Monroe, and I'm the chairman of the committee that's tasked with making recommendations for this plan. Now, here's an overview of the proposed plan for the future of Union County, some of the recommended changes, and how we still need your help. Increase stormwater regulation to accommodate larger storms and to apply the standards to nearly all new developments. Require well testing for a potential home buyer so they would know about their well water before committing to buying a home. Allow residential subdivisions in areas designated for rural or agricultural uses with smaller sizes if water and sewer service is available. For rural parts of the county without utilities, increase open space requirements for major subdivisions to help preserve the natural environment. Add standards for improving sites for new schools to address buffers, traffic impacts, and impact on nearby incompatible uses. Close the donut holes. These are the islands of land surrounded by municipality to create consistent developmental patterns. There's four new initiatives that we're proposing to address community concerns. Establish rural water authority to make the eastern and southern parts of the county eligible for state and federal grants to help residents connect to public water. Fund transportation projects through a county-wide quarter cent sales tax pending voter approval. Establish a litter task force and expand broadband internet service. Now, a lot of time and effort has been put into crafting these recommendations. The five subcommittees and the coordinating committee have met more than sixty times since last December and heard presentations on agricultural, transportation, stormwater, environmental health, residential and commercial development, solid waste, water and sewer service, and other issues. Now, we'd like to hear from you on drafted comprehensive plan ideas. Please help us shape our community's future, and we appreciate your input.
So did that come through okay with the audio?
Yes, that was fine.
So we're pretty proud of that video. We think it's a effective way to present in two and a half minutes what otherwise would take reading seventy-nine pages to accomplish. And so in terms of the plan, this spreadsheet shows all the things on the left that were considered, all the different regulatory or new initiatives that were considered. And I'm not going to go through them line by line because quite a few of you have been to the been to the meetings or participated in previous public input sessions. But the key is that recommendations in this plan have strong support from the committees. They have to have at least two-thirds Have strong support from the committees. They have to have at least two thirds support from the members as they vote on them. This wasn't a plan where we just put in dozens and dozens of recommendations, knowing that a lot of them will never get touched. These these recommendations have a lot of support behind them. And they include things like improving our stormwater requirements. And cluster allowances in rural areas to instead of having rezonings, just allowing the same number of lots on. On less land and allowing more open space to be preserved. Putting in school siting requirements instead of the way it currently is where. Schools can be located on any zoning of land in Union in unincorporated Union County. What you guys probably care about a lot is the transition zones for donut areas. And also proposing a quarter cent sales tax for transportation projects. So. The land use map, which a lot of people care about, this depicts those transition zones that are probably really important to Weddington. So right here, this is north of the target. In Wesley Chapel, click on it and it gives a definition of what a transition zone is. It's an area surrounded by one or more municipalities. Union County would support the land use planning and service delivery for the nearby municipalities. In order to bring about more predictable land uses and efficient. And efficient service delivery patterns, Union County would not approve new development requiring rezonings in these areas. New development and rezoning should occur as a part of annexation into the adjacent municipality. So this one here and up here, which is really impacted by the the West Fork Interceptor Project by Union County Public Works. They're surrounded by two or even three municipalities. So this would require probably a small area plan between, you know, Wesley Chapel, Weddington, Indian Trail. To determine what they they really want in these areas and kind of set up spheres of influence regarding where they would. Annex and give some predictability to property owners. So these are truly islands of land or they're like over here towards Waxaw against the state line. They are a peninsula, but for Union County purposes, they're an island. The if you compare this map to the existing land use map, which was adopted back in 2014. This has a lot less multifamily and single family residential. The yellow area goes would previously go way south of NC 75. And also extend further to the east past Monroe towards Wesley Chapel. The orange areas, which are towards the intersections of Cuthbert Center 16 or or 16 and Newtown. Would have been much larger. A lot of this area in the middle between the municipalities would have been. Identified for mixed residential, which means apartments, townhomes, condominiums, small lot residential. So this has been dialed back quite a bit to just be at these commercial nodes and to really be. A an activity center in the sense of like Stonecrest or Waverly, the idea that. You know, you might be able to live there and walk to adjacent stores or businesses. So this is the land use map. That is recommended as a part of the comprehensive plan. Then if you actually want to read the plan. On the fourth tab, you can click on this tab right here and it'll come up as its own document. It looks like this. And. Then. After you've read it. Or watch the video, we're asking for your feedback. Everyone, whether you come to an in person meeting or you participate online, we're asking you to complete this survey. How did you review the plan and its recommendations? It's à la carte. Collect, click as many as apply. Attended a meeting or watch watch the video. What's the most important issue to address? Just type in whatever is important that you think the county should be addressing. And then are we addressing it? Yes, somewhat or no? What are we focusing on that you think is not really that useful? Type that in there. Where do you live? By township? How long have you lived here? And how old are you? And then you hit submit and this gets added up into our master spreadsheet. We are going to take the comments that we've received and analyze them this week. And present them to the coordinating committee next Monday afternoon to get some feedback from them. Because some comments, they might say, well, yep, we've considered that and we're. We don't think we should do anything about it and so we're not going to change anything based on that comment, but maybe some other ones. We say, well, that's a really good point. We should consider that. And then maybe refer it to the appropriate subcommittee, whether it's agriculture, business and development, environment or citizens committee. They will. You know, deliberate at their January meeting, come up with some guidance on whether, yes, we should, we should include it or no, we shouldn't. And if things go well and we can respond to the comments effectively. At the end of January, the coordinating committee, which is chaired by Archie Morgan. Will make a recommendation for the comprehensive plan document. And at that point, their work will be done. We will then take it to the planning board and take it to the county commission and. Respond to their feedback and and hopefully able to incorporate their feedback. Based on their guidance, but the work of the citizens that over 60 that were appointed to this process will be complete. So that's where we stand. We certainly encourage you to share these documents. The upper right corner of this page has links for Facebook. Twitter and a hyperlink that you can share via email or text or whatever. So we recognize that, you know, in person meetings aren't really the way things are happening these days. And and so we've made this very accessible in an online format. So I know a lot of you have already participated in previous meetings, but we're happy to answer any questions or take any comments you may have.
Okay, thanks Bjorn. Just, do you have an update? I was on with Legent and last Thursday and he the the numbers were pretty low for the feedback. Do you do you have the? The number?
I looked this afternoon and we're up to 29, which is not frankly, not very high. The first two rounds of this process, we averaged about 200 people. So I don't know why they're lower. Frankly, this is less work and more concrete in terms of what's being recommended. You'd think it would kind of stir the pot, but it really hasn't happened.
Is there any you sound like you got to sound like you're pretty set on your timeline. Is there any chance that these? This. Feedback period could be extended or would consider to be extended?
Honest, I mean, it always it could, but honestly, it's been my experience that you start off hot with. Feedback and then it kind of trails off. So towards the end of the process, you get very little.
Yeah, okay. Well, we still have a few more days, so we, you know, I. Will continue to email and and share on Facebook. I know I've personally emailed the link to to a handful of people that. Had reached out. Over some rezonings and some stuff, so I, you know, but it's it's frustrating and I know it's frustrating sometimes for you guys to put so much effort in it.
Even the video, we're able to look at the YouTube page for it and find out. How many people have viewed it? And I think even as of today, it was only around. 200, which considering how many people follow Union County and all the municipalities. It's really surprising.
Yeah. Okay, well, thanks very much. I will open the floor to Council. Ann Pruitt, do you have any questions for Bjorn?
I don't. Just wanted to thank you again Bjorn for coming. It was a great presentation and. I'm trying to share and get people to get on there and provide their feedback as well. So thanks Bjorn.
Thanks.
All right, Smith, do you have anything?
No, I just want to thank you Bjorn. I also attended the the meeting the other night. And it's a lot of really good information, really well presented and I just want to thank you. And the staff for doing such a great job. I mean, it's really covering a lot of important areas, so kudos to you guys.
Very good. Janice Probst.
I can't add anything. I think they've both said it all. Thank you Bjorn.
Okay.
I will, I will make sure I do share it some more and see if we can get a little bit additional responses for you. Thank you.
And and I certainly hope that 12 of those 29 are are Weddington folks. I will, we will send it back out. We we send an email out. We're going to send an email out, make sure that all our planning board and. And council members, so we should at least have 12 of those hopefully. Anyway, thanks so much Bjorn. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Okay, public safety. We have our public safety report in the packet. But I do not know if there is a deputy tonight. Lisa is there?
I'm here. Crop.
Oh, there you are. Oh, hey, you are there. Welcome. We're glad you're there. I hope you're safe.
My name's Deputy Crop. I work for the Union County Sheriff, so I'm signed to the town of Weddington. A couple of things to note. 12 Mile Creek near Weddington Elementary School during let out times anywhere between 1:45 and 2:15. Has become a real hot issue with traffic backing up in both directions going into the school. We've been out there trying to inform residents that if they don't have to come through that area during that time period until this issue gets resolved. If they would mind taking an alternate route. Ultimately, we've had some issues where potential traffic collisions have. Almost occurred or occurred at the entrance to the school and we're just urging residents that are in that area. If you're picking up kids. And getting in the line, that's fine, but if you're just passing through the area and you have the opportunity to take another route. We just don't want people crossing the double yellow line and driving on the wrong side of the road. Also. It's the holiday time, so people, please lock your doors to your vehicles, turn your lights on at night. We had a vehicle stolen out of Weddington last Monday, ended up in Charlotte. But a vehicle was unlocked and it had about $5,000 worth of tools and equipment for a business. So we just need everyone to lock their vehicles up and make sure they keep themselves safe. And if they're going to be enjoying an alcoholic beverage over the holidays. Please use ride sharing services and don't get behind the wheel of the car. And put yourself in a situation where you could be driving under the influence. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I ask a quick question of Deputy before he goes?
Yeah, sure. Yes, ma'am.
Just regarding the whole governor's order, just some clarification. I know that people are supposed to be at home where they're sleeping that night at 10 o'clock. Does that go like pretty much? Have you seen people out and about traveling, you know, kids home from college? Are they able to go to their friend's house or what are you seeing or what have you been directed to to those folks that are out maybe after that 10 o'clock curfew?
We haven't been given any guidelines as far as the curfew is concerned at this time. At this point, we business as usual, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and just as kind of a little side note. Weddington Elementary has been, as Deputy Crop said, a issue for for quite some time. I have. The latter part of. It's not this time a year ago, had had been working with. The Transportation Director at UCS. And one of the DOT. Folks that works kind of hand in hand with the schools. We had spoken with the principal. They are aware of it. But because they're state run roads and because it's UCS property. It's it's a it's kind of a tricky situation for us in the town. I I will follow back up with the folks at UCS and. They had. The gentleman had, you know, the discussion that that was was that they could they restack the the line of traffic? Car line of traffic going into the school. For those of you that are familiar with it, there is. Grass areas on both sides and and I think if if the traffic in the the school. Entrance going in was was improved, they could stack traffic. Possibly that could pull some of it off of 12 Mile Creek. But I just want to let residents know that that's something that has been on my radar and I have talked with. The UCS people about it, but I will follow back up. Not in that area much anymore at that particular time and it just hasn't been on my radar. But I'm glad Deputy Crop brought that up and I will follow up, so just as a note to that. If nobody else has any more comments, we will move on to the consent agenda. Lisa, if you could just go over those couple of items, please, for clarity.
Sure. Item 9A, we're calling for a public hearing to be held January 11th at 7:00 at Weddington Town Hall. This is the text amendment to section 4679 connection to public water lines. If y'all can remember, Chief McLendon was in speaking to us about concerns with fire hydrants. Being on the opposite side of a development and having to shut the the street down when there's a fire. So staff is recommending the text highlighted here as item B. Item 9B is approving the 2021 holiday calendar. We usually follow the the state's holiday calendar. And then. 9B is also adopting our 2021 regular town council meeting. We'll continue to meet the second Monday of every month at 7:00. And Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we had to move. Shift any of these meetings a week early or back due to holidays, correct?
That is correct. And just a an additional note, the holiday calendar we follow, we get from the county. Just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so if. There are no questions, I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, that was Councilwoman Probst and I will look for a vote from Pruitt.
Yes, agree.
Yeah, Smith?
Yes.
And Probst?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Gosh, I'm struggling getting names out here. Jeff's messed me up because he's not here. I usually get in a rhythm. Approval of minutes. November 9, 2020. Are there any changes to those regular town council minutes? If not, I will look for a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
All in favor, Probst?
Yes.
Pruitt?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed and now we need to approve our minutes for November 13th. Our the special meeting minutes. If there are no changes, I will look for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Go ahead, Jen.
All right.
And they can, it can be yours, Mike.
Okay, I'll take it from Smith. Janice, what's your?
Yes.
Smith?
Smith? Yes, yes, sorry.
Pruitt?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, our public hearing. We have. We are discussion and consideration for approval of the annexation agreement. Ordinance renewal with the Village of Marvin. So this is a public hearing and I will open the public hearing and Karen Dewey, have we had any comments submitted? From residents?
I have had no comments submitted and the period will be open until. I can't remember what time tomorrow night.
Twenty twenty four hours, we'll stay till. Eight o'clock tomorrow night.
Okay.
Okay, so we will, because we are conducting a virtual meeting by state statutes, we are required to. To continue with the public comment period for an additional 24 hours. So residents that would like to submit any comments can do that. Until Tuesday, December 15th at 8:00 AM. And because of that, we cannot vote on it. Until after that public comment period is closed. I would like to ask if Council. Is okay. I would like to go ahead and call for a special meeting. On Thursday morning at 10:00 AM to consider this item and this will be a just a quick Zoom call. Council, Janice, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, and Ann?
Yes.
Okay. Do you guys, I I think I may have gotten ahead of myself. Does anybody have any questions? We this has been discussed. I mean, we've kind of gone over this and looked at this. Does anybody have any questions about this at all or are we good?
I do not.
Okay.
I'm good.
I'm good also.
Okay, so we will continue to accept public comments for another 24 hours. And we have called for a special meeting on Thursday morning at 10:00 AM to consider this item. And I guess that's all. We need.
That's good. That's good.
Okay, good. Thank you, Karen. All right, new business. We don't have any old business, new business. So we have the discussion and consideration of the Cardinal Road preliminary plat. So Lisa, if you could just take a second, go over your report on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Scott Swersky submitted a preliminary plats for nine lots on 13.32 acres. This is located at the southwest corner of Highway 84 in Lester Davis. The preliminary plat was approved back in June of 2018, and it has expired since it's been two years since a final plat has been submitted. They did bring a three lot subdivision to the planning board. Had a buyer that wanted larger, three larger lots that fell through. The new applicant is looking to go back to the original nine lot subdivision. When this first originally went through, there was some concerns about the cul-de-sac and the Highway 84 improvements. But before you all saw this, or the previous council saw this from 2018, we did try to address most of those comments. We added a bulb to this cul-de-sac. We added a 30-foot tree save area. We added the future right of way onto the plan. There's a right turn lane into the development. And then we set the properties back further. I will have them detail that this is the front setback along the south side of that tree save buffer. The planning board reviewed the preliminary plat November 23rd. They noted a discrepancy between the plat notes and the condition about the maintenance of the pipe on Lot 8. I have confirmed that this should be maintained by the lot owner of, the owner of Lot 8. It's a, it's a pipe along this creek that serves this lot only. So that will be maintained by that lot owner. The preliminary plat has not changed from the original approval, therefore staff recommends approval, but the same conditions as bulleted in your staff report, as long as we change that the second bullet stating the maintenance of the pipe on Lot 8 shall be the responsibility of the owner of the lot. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Swersky is on as well to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, counsel, are there any questions?
I have a question. Is this going to be the Cardinal Court? Is it actually going to be a North Carolina DOT maintained road? Or is it going to be a private roadway for the HOA?
It's a private driveway that'll be maintained by the HOA.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Smith, are you okay?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Janice?
No, I do not.
Okay. Okay. Well, very good. And this is familiar. So I asked, as Lisa said, there doesn't seem to be any changes for the exception of the, the maintenance of the pipe. So I will look for a motion to approve the Cardinal Road preliminary plat with the conditions listed.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, Probst?
Yes.
Pruitt?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay. We are now to our UDO update draft by our attorney, Kevin Brigawatt. So welcome. I think he's on and has been on. So I will let him have the floor and you can give us your update.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. We are continuing to meet monthly with the planning board to continue working through the UDO. Last month, our, our sections were Article 8 and Article 9. I'm gonna just give a brief update to you folks here this evening, just to keep you up to speed as things are moving along. Reminder, you all will get as deep a dive as you want in the spring. Once we get a completed final draft, Planning Board's been great to work with. We're real happy with the progress and continue to keep working well with them. Article 8, which we have in front of you, is the subdivision regulations. Again, we're tracking the state statutes, 160D and Article 8 of the state statutes is the authority for subdivision review. So we're, we're tracking that nomenclature. Our focus in this section is on the process of subdividing land, not the development standards for a residential development or subdivision, but subdivision as far as dividing the lands. So we, we track the state statute with the definitions of subdivision, and then we pick up with your existing ordinances for minor and major subdivision, then with some revised language to explain what will be a bit of a revised process for you for minor and major. I think Lisa, just probably to spend best use of folks' time tonight is probably the graphics. It's so perfect. You're going right where I was gonna, gonna ask you to go. For minor subdivisions, the idea would be just a simple two-step process of the preliminary plat, construction review, and then a final plat. And this would just be the very small lot subdivisions where you wouldn't, it wouldn't be big, you wouldn't have new roads. And then what we spent most of our time talking about was the two variations of major subdivisions, which would be the larger lots. And it would either be your traditional subdivision or residential development or your conservation residential development. This first one is the process if we, for a traditional neighborhood development. And I think the point I'd leave you with, remember, we're, we're trying to build in this CZ process early on, CZ conditional zoning process, early on in the development of any significant size development with any significant impact. So what you would call now is, is a preliminary subdivision plat review. You're going to have it as the CZ zoning review at step one, where you all will ultimately, after you get comments and feedback from the public at your public hearing, your planning board, from their recommendations, and your staff from a review, the elected officials will make the zoning decision whether you all are going to approve a traditional residential development of any size through the CZ zoning process. Then if it is approved at step one, the subsequent steps will just be administrative and handled by staff. That would be a construction plan review in connection with any applicable permits and a final plat, which would just be the map that's recorded at the register of deeds when folks want to sell lots. But again, the significant review input public process is at the beginning of the development exercise with the conditional zoning. Then you're going to see something very similar for your conservation residential development, which is the, you know, really what we would expect to be the primary type of development in Weddington. Again, you're going to keep your current process of the site walk and the site specific plan. That's going to be your conditional zoning process, same steps I just went over. Your public input, your planning board, your staff, and of course, with conservation residential developments, you all have additional steps with these site walks and, and charrettes and that type of thing. So you'll have the CZ process with all that input and then same run of show that I just went through. Ultimately, that will be the town elected official's decision to vote yes or no on the application that the developer puts in front of you all after that process. If approved, the steps four and five will then be administrative. That should just be confirming compliance with the zoning plan that you've all reviewed. So I hope all that is sounding familiar from our, from our previous presentations to you. That's in line with the original direction, of course, when we did our, our own work sessions over the summer. And, and we just spent a good bit of time making sure we were following how the subdivision process fits in well with that zoning process. Thought it went real well. Again, really unanimous support right now for the direction this was heading with the planning board. And so that's where we left it with Article 8. While I have you, I will let you know that we also had a discussion on Article 9, which is a section about all the uses and the rules around particular uses in Weddington. We've got some feedback from the planning board. We're going to have that back on their agenda here this Monday. We're doing some reorganizing and I think you'll see some improvements in, in the way we drafted that. So it'll be a little bit shorter with some of the bulkier sections being moved into appendices, like for example, the floodplain requirements or the stormwater requirements that are more technical. So we're going to try to keep the flow of a very easy to read document, we hope, with technical materials in the ordinance, but, but as appendices that can be used when and if we need them. In the planning board seems to be giving us very good advice and is kind of with the program that Lisa and I are recommending about trying to get something that's user friendly for them, for you and the public. So feeling good about where we are. We'll have our meeting with them next week and we'll actually get through the rest of the sections. We'll do nine again, round two, and then we'll do 10 through 14. Our January meeting is intended to be our editorial meeting where we put everything in front of them in one fell swoop. So I'd like to think we're still on track to, to get things back in front of you in February or March kind of time period with a recommendation from the planning board. So that's an update, Lisa. Certainly if you have anything to add or if anybody has any questions, we'll be happy to address them.
Okay, very good. Lisa, do you have any, anything you want to add?
I don't.
Okay, are there questions? Any questions from council?
No.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for this, Kevin. This is awesome. And, and this is, you guys are plugging right along. And I think the process is going to be a lot easier for everyone. So we certainly appreciate you working on that.
Thank you very much. Enjoy to get to work with your planning board. They're doing a nice job.
Well, wonderful. Well, so kudos to the planning board. Thanks. Thanks, Adam, for all their work.
Very good.
Okay, we are now to our update. Lisa, do you have any updates or anything?
Um, yes, the Roots Farm Public Involvement Meeting, there's going to be two more this week. You can find them on the town's website, townofweddington.com, under upcoming events. We have the public involvement meeting this Wednesday from 9 to 11. That's virtual. And then there's an additional public involvement meeting trying to make up from the one that was canceled last week due to public safety concerns. We're going to try to do that this Friday, December 18th, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. And then Planning Board has been moved up a week due to Christmas. So they're meeting next Monday, and that'll be the first time they are being presented the materials. So we'll have Roots Farm at that first planning board meeting next week, the text amendment and that rezoning. I was made aware of a possible annexation and rezoning into Indian Trail. This is along Potter's Road, Potter Road. They're trying to connect to Potter's Cove subdivision. It's Stanley Martin Homes. It's called Glenhurst. They have a public involvement meeting Wednesday, December 16th, from 2 to 4 and 5 to 7. Both of those are virtual. They're going from R40 in the county to Indian Trails CZ 5, which is 116 homes on 41 acres.
Oh, boy.
So that's right on our border up on Potter Road. And they're trying to connect to that Potter Cove subdivision. So you might be hearing from them. The Matthews House was used for a practice burn on December 5th. That went very well. I am working to get a quote to get that cleaned up. And I did get a quote from turf commander to go ahead and start getting that lot seeded and fertilized so it's ready for the spring. And then last of all, we will be back into the office. Hopefully this Wednesday, we'll open up the doors again from 9 to 1, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And I want to thank everyone for their patience. And this is our last meeting of the month. So I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and Happy New Year. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you for that. Code enforcement report, that is in your packet. It's been cleaned up a little bit. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Okay, it was quiet long enough there. No questions for the code enforcement. Leslie, I think Leslie's on. There you are. Hello.
Hello. You've got the, the monthly financials are in your packet. I just got an email today from Anne Craven, the auditor. They are wrapping up the audit. She sent a couple of fraud questionnaires for me to distribute. I don't even know who is getting them this year. I haven't seen them yet. But be on the lookout so that if you get one, if you could complete it as quickly as possible, so we can turn that around and get our financial statements submitted to the LGC. And that is all I have.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much for that. Transportation report, I don't really have an update. We do have our, our monthly CRTPO meeting Wednesday night, so I can report back for January. But as of right now, we don't have anything. So we are down to council comments. I will, I will start with Councilman Smith.
I just want to thank everybody for attending the, the meeting. And I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you in next year.
Very good. Probst?
Same thing. Merry Christmas to everyone. Happy Hanukkah. Safe travels. Happy New Year. If you are with your family and friends, just enjoy each other. And hopefully next year will be a much brighter and happier year.
Okay, very good. Counselor Pruitt?
I will echo everybody's sayings. Wish you a Merry, Merry, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Hanukkah. Be safe. Wear your masks. Don't take a chance. I want to make sure we see everybody next year. Thank you.
That's right. Yeah, so for those that are still watching, thank you for getting through this meeting with us tonight. It, we got in a real good rhythm when we were doing virtual and we had two months back in town hall. And it's, it was a struggle making it through with the roll call. So thank you very much for watching. Thank you for being involved in the community. And I wish everybody a safe and happy holiday. And we all, I think, look forward to a new year in 2021. That being said, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, Pruitt?
Aye.
Probst?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
All righty, good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, Kevin.
Kevin.